Being seven o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting of the board of selectmen to order if I could. Do they have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved, second.
And a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Are there any walk-ins tonight? Sure, if you don't mind coming up, but just identify yourself, name and address if you don't mind.
Sure. My name is Ted Good, I live at 21 Grasshopper Lane in Minnetonka.
Ted.
Hi.
Hi. Pull your tie out, you're on TV.
I'm sorry? Yeah, I had a sweater on, thanks. I was hoping to be joined by Dave Ball, but I think he may be running a little late, but we are on behalf of the Beach Association, Cedar Point and North Situate Beach Association, going to donate, each donate $500 to the Situate Food Pantry. And it's really a reflection of some of the challenges they're facing right now with the cutbacks in the SNAP program, which is supplemental nutritional assistance, and some of the other things, really not to take up too much time, we were hoping to call some attention to. There's going to be a bottle and can drive in December at the transfer station, and it's another chance, and here's Dave Ball now, sorry, start without you. The, it's a great chance to raise some money locally, some cash for the food pantry, and it's a pretty pressing time. I know there's a lot of can drives and a lot of food gathering that's going on at this time of year, and it's ongoing. I know my daughter had one both at her school and her church. And they also need financial assistance because they're, what they do is more than just the canned goods and things like that, they also do vouchers for fuel and several other direct gifts, or not gifts, direct aid to people in our community, and there's a great increase in the need coming up. So we were hoping to really highlight the bottle and can drive in December in the transfer station, and anyone who wants to volunteer can contact the situatefoodpantry@gmail, at situatefoodpantry@gmail.com, or call Kim Ryan at 781-545-1714. And it's a great chance for high school kids to get credit for community service, and they'll be accompanied by adults. We need people to sort, we need people to deliver, but it is something that can generate several thousand dollars for our community locally at a really, really hard time. And we wanted to underscore that. There's a couple of other ways that they can raise funds. I know that there are direct donations to Situate Food Pantry, PO Box 120, Situate Mass. O2066 is the way to send the checks in. There are programs going on, right now there's going to be one on First Fridays, going to be raffles, things like that, they're again, going to be raising cash for the cause. And finally, anyone who wants to donate $25 directly to the food pantry, they can go down to any number of places and get the calendars that we have out this year. And they're at Hennessy's News, the Front Street Bookshop, the Mill Wharf, Native, Bundle of Hope, Paradise at Home, North Situate Pharmacy, and the town offices. And it's all tax deductible, and it 100% goes to the food pantry, and that's really the basis for why I'm up here tonight.
Great.
Dave, can I add before? Yeah, I just, Ted and I have been talking about this for a few days, and he mentioned he's coming in, so I said, well, maybe, I had told him that the Cedar Point Association has made donations for quite a few years around this time of the year. We've done it quietly, not looking for a lot of attention, but maybe this year we figured we'd mention it more publicly, just hopefully to encourage other organizations to donate as well. We have sent in a check to the food pantry for $500, so hopefully that'll help out a little bit.
Thank you very much.
Can I just have one quick question?
Sure.
Can you repeat, please, the email address? Is it literally one word, situatefoodpantry@gmail?
Yeah, I'm sorry if I, it all ran together, it's one word. Situatefoodpantry@gmail.com.
And so if there is a person who is interested in doing community service, that would be the email that would be best?
That would be the first one, but in case I didn't parse the words correctly, you can also call Kim Ryan, 545-1714. But that would be a great way for kids to get into the community service, or anyone. And we do need trucks to deliver the goods over to where we can have them redeemed, and anyone who goes should wear gloves.
And just a quick question. When you mentioned canning at the transfer stations, too, you're talking about actually working in the area where we throw the recycle?
Exactly, the cans and bottles, the redeemable cans.
Yeah, the redemption.
Yeah.
So this isn't the people standing out there looking for donations to a cause?
No, that's right.
It's work back and actually working in the, in that bin to the far right?
Right, and...
The date on that, again Ted? The date at the transfer station?
It's going to be all of December.
December 1st through.
The entire month of December, so.
So probably like middle school age and above is okay?
I think you have to be 13 to be in that area.
Junior high, junior high, high school.
Yeah, there will be an adult accompanying all high school students, but I don't know, junior high, I don't want to get too close.
No, that's fine.
And I assume you break it down into a couple hour shifts or whatever, so you can donate as much as you can?
I think I know where I'll be, son, my son.
Well, my daughter's seventh grade, and she's looking around, that's why I asked, it sounds like she might be a little young because she's not 13.
Sure.
So that's why I was asking what the cutoff is. Okay, thanks.
I'm sure a lot of kids who are back from college on college break and...
Yeah, exactly right.
Good things to do with their times.
Yeah, alright, thanks Ted.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you Ted, thanks Dave.
Thanks Dave.
Moving on to the next agenda, item number three, is a discussion and vote, possibility of change in the hours at the wine and gourmet shop in North Situate. Do you mind coming up to the microphone? Pretty self-explanatory, but if you, give you a few minutes and maybe some people out there, we'll get some advertising out of it. So if you could explain what you'd like, let me know.
Yeah, so, right now, we close at eight o'clock, which is, seems pretty consistent with the traffic we see, but when we have different events going on or during the holidays, we get a lot of people that are coming at like eight o'clock on the dot. So extending it a little bit for the people that are coming off the train would be helpful, and also, what I've seen is when we're having events, people are afraid to come in. So if I push my events out a little later, it won't impact the general population that comes in on a daily basis.
Okay, and you're looking to go from eight to 10, is that correct?
Yes.
Alright.
Sunday will remain the same.
The same?
Yeah.
Any questions, comments?
No, motion?
Well, just one second, how long have you owned the business now?
Just since August, August 3rd.
Yep.
Good, great.
And the restaurant's open right next to it, so it's a, it's a traffic area anyway?
And the train.
The train, definitely where our foot traffic comes in.
Absolutely.
Will the board of selectmen vote to grant the following change in hours to Stillwater's Wine and Gourmet at 366 Gannett Road, North Situate? Change from the current closing time of 8:00 PM Monday through Saturday to 10:00 PM. Sundays will remain from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you Tricia.
Moving right along, the next is a discussion and vote to change the entertainment license at TK O'Malley's Sports Cafe, 194 Front Street. Lenny Hahn and Walter Collins, I hear from TK O'Malley's. Again, this is pretty simple, but I'll let you guys do the explanation and reason, I don't see, I don't have any issues with it.
Yeah, we're just going to be putting a jukebox system in, customers have suggested it over the years, I've seen it in places in Marshfield that I frequent, it's a new type of deal, you can download an app on your iPhone and play songs through your iPhone, so you're not having a lot of traffic and kids hanging around the bar and whatnot, so everybody can just kind of do it from their phone right then and there. And you can't go up with coins and dollars as well. So it's just another way of, for the customers to get involved with what's going on in the restaurant.
Where are you going to put it?
There's two locations, one was in the dining room area, but I think we're more or less probably going to keep it near the bar area so we can monitor what's going on in there.
So, I guess, is it going to be facing out towards the porch? I mean, I guess the only issue would be noise, you know?
Yeah, the spot I'm thinking of is where the three TVs are, right below them on the right is an area by the glassware.
Right.
It's kind of a high volume area.
So they'd be facing the bathrooms, Rich?
Exactly, across from the bathrooms.
Interior, okay.
And there's two units or one unit?
One.
There's one unit, is it actually a big jukebox?
Yeah, it can't be that big, right?
This is the picture up here if you guys want to see it.
Because you don't have a lot of room to walk between the...
It's actually smaller than this, it's only nine inches wide, so.
Yeah, I've seen those things, pretty cool.
Yeah.
Does it have a separate sound system or it's like this?
They will tie into existing stuff.
Oh, I got you, okay.
And then it plays, if it's not being used by customers, it will play just basic songs that come through.
That's great, huh?
Yeah, it's at small wall mounts, you know, not hindering anything as far as, the old ones moving them around.
You're going to have our kind of music?
Sure.
A little Led Zeppelin going?
You download the app on your iPhone.
I thought you were going to say elevator music, you know?
The songs are, there's a zillion of them out there. I mean, we can control...
The volume?
Well, that, plus the songs that they are choosing, like, there's going to be songs that aren't available, anything would...
Right.
Yeah, it's not explicit.
So you have a family restaurant?
Yeah, no rap, no hip-hop, no, you know.
Yeah, right. We don't hear those words anymore.
Stones.
Little Allman Brothers.
Allman Brothers.
Good stuff.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion?
Or you might want to stretch it out, I'm sure everyone's tuned in down the restaurant right now watching you guys.
Move the board of, move the board of selectmen vote to grant the following, ooh, yeah, right, thank you Mr. Nani. We need the days of the weeks and the hours. The current license lists entertainment Thursday through Sunday from 12 noon to 12 midnight, so that's the same?
Is that what you'd like to?
Set the same, Rich?
It's going to have to be the hours of operation?
Yeah, we'd like it, yeah, seven days a week.
As long as the restaurant's open?
Yes.
During, during restaurant business hours, is that, will that work?
Works for me. As long as the restaurant doesn't stay open later than the liquor, than the entertainment license, right? What time do you close, at 1:00 or 12:00?
1:00.
I always say during entertainment license, during hours of the entertainment license?
Well, they only have it Thursday through Sunday.
Oh, yeah, they've got it, obviously the current entertainment license is 12 to 12.
But after just, stop at 12, every night, right?
From Thursday, it says right now, Thursday through Sunday, 12 noon to 12 midnight, should we say?
Monday through Sunday till midnight.
Monday through...
Would you really consider this even entertainment? I mean, they could have a stereo system playing background music, and that's really not even entertainment.
Right now, the entertainment license covers four member live bands.
Right.
Disco, DJ, other types of music, so this is just part of the entertainment that we never put on because we didn't have it. Didn't exist probably a few years ago, maybe, I don't know.
Well, I mean, at one point, I think a lot of it is, like the video games, I think it was kind of associated with that, that kind of a license, so I don't know if it's...
Is there something in the license wording, Kim, that says, you know, jukeboxes are covered by, or jukeboxes need a permit or anything that you know of by chance?
I'm trying to think, there is another licensee that has a jukebox, I can't think of who it is right now.
Jamies.
Might be Jamies up in North Situate.
Yep.
But it's included in all their types of entertainment there, so there are specific hours.
Okay.
You could specify the hours for the jukebox if you want to, if you want separately from the band, or jukebase stuff, I don't know how you want to do with that.
Do we, do we, must we have days and weeks? Must we have hours, or could we just say?
It can't be louder than a Patriots game on a Monday night, you know?
Just during operating hours, like you said before, the regular hours that were open, that we serve with the license.
Right, because right now your entertainment license is limited from Thursday through Sunday.
So during restaurant business hours?
I would do, yeah.
Yeah, restaurant business hours.
Move the board of selectmen vote to grant the following change in the entertainment license for TK O'Malley Sports Cafe, the addition of a jukebox on the interior wall between the dining room and the bar to be played during restaurant business hours.
Perfect.
Motion and a second? Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous? Thanks. One, do you think it'll be up and running?
Probably within two weeks.
You're going to say 8:15?
I met with a gentleman.
Time for Christmas.
Yeah, probably within next two weeks.
That's pretty neat.
They're going to come in and run the wiring and whatnot and all that, so.
Good, good.
Congratulations.
Thanks, have a good night, thank you.
Thank you gentlemen.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. The next, thank you Kevin, the next is a discussion and vote of release of a betterment, which happens to be Cornerstone Lane. Half a year's here to explain, if you need any more explanation. But just off the top of my head, I don't, does this happen? Usually this, I'll explain, and then I'll ask the question.
Okay, Cornerstone Lane, it went to street acceptance, on the street acceptance committee, we came up with a list of items that needed to be fixed for it to be accepted for a street. It was a fairly recently completed subdivision, the developer came in to that street acceptance, took care of all the issues, repaired them, and bore all the cost for that, for the resonance of that subdivision. Hence, just through the process though, a betterment was attached, but the betterment was a zero. So this is just bookkeeping to clear the wreck and release the lien from the property owners.
That's the way it's supposed to happen typically, so when we take, a private way over as a public way, typically, if it's like Pineview Drive, it was done forty years ago, a long time, right?
That was done in the 60s, so this one, he had just, he was just completing, as I recall, they just paved it, and he had to put some grates on some structures and change a couple other things.
So that's what we really, we like to see this all the time, I guess, this is great.
Just one quick question, is the, this is releasing the betterment, but is it actually a public street now?
Yes.
So it is, okay.
Motion, please.
Will the board of selectmen vote, the order as follows, the total cost of the improvements to Cornerstone Lane of $0 is hereby determined, therefore, pursuant to sections one and two of chapter 80 of the Mass General Laws, no betterment shall be assessed.
I have a motion, and how about a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great, thanks Kevin.
Thank you very much, have a nice night.
You too?
You too Kevin.
The next is a list of annual license renewals.
I haven't seen it.
Here's a list.
Oh, here.
So move the board of selectmen vote to renew the bowling and electronic games licenses for Situate Bowlway for 2014.
Second. A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Move the board of selectmen vote to renew the class two licenses for Driftway Auto and McBrians Diagnostic Repair for 2014.
Second. A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alex Stain, Kim?
Move the board of selectmen vote to renew the class three license for Ryan Allen LLC for 2014.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alex Stain as well.
Move the board of selectmen vote to renew the class three license for Christopher Litchfield Doing Business As Ray's Repair Shop for 2014.
Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move the board of selectmen vote to renew the following common victory licenses for 2014. Cersei's Grotto, Dribbles, Harbor House, Known As Homemade, Hennessy News, Maria's Sub and Pizza, Morning Glory's Crayo Yogurt, Silent Chef, Mary Lou's News, and Dad's Place.
Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move the board of selectmen vote to renew the following Hawker Peddler's licenses for 2014, Known As Homemade, Zack's Ice Cream, and Sugar Shack.
Second. A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move the board of selectmen vote to renew the movie theater and common victors licenses for South Shore Cinemas for 2014.
Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move the board of selectmen vote to renew the following septic disposal licenses for 2014. Alltown Inc., Ronaby Inc., Joseph Bonomi, Rosano Davis Sanitary Pumping, PF Spencer Jr. Inc., and Sporito Environmental Services Inc.
Second. Motion and a second for those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I didn't ask for anybody opposed, our opposed, just something like that, just yell, I just assumed it was something as routine as that, everyone's in favor?
I oppose.
Which one?
I resent that.
Alright, moving right along, number seven, we have a couple of resignations.
I move the board of selectmen vote to accept the resignation of Geraldine Quinlan from the Council on Aging and Further, that the board thanked Ms. Quinlan for serving the council in the town of Situate.
Second. And motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move the board of selectmen vote to accept the resignation of Kim Ho Granville and David Givens from the Sister City Committee, and further that the board thank Mrs. Granville and Mr. Givens for volunteering their time and talents to the committee.
Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Now, appointments to the Sister City Committee.
I move the board of selectmen vote to strike that. I move the board of selectmen appoint Ann Marie Jean, Corinne Annette, Amel, Boobin Green, and the Sister City, to the Sister City Committee.
Second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, just to sort of make a little comment about this?
Yes.
You know, we do tons of appointments, and I understand this is not a financial commitment, big committee like that, but I just have to comment that these people who volunteered for this committee have to be some of the most qualified people for a relevant committee I've come across. I mean, one of these, they're all fluent in French, they're retired French teachers, and you know, we often have people volunteer for committees, which is good because they're interested, and they, maybe they're trying to learn something new, sort of thing, but these people are all incredibly qualified, and I think it's very fortunate that they're stepping up for the committee. It's really impressive.
Since we're on this, can I just make a comment? Because I would have done it under other business, but, you know, the committee's going to be getting together next week to discuss next year's events, exchange programs, both to France and also back, and there is going to be an expectation that hopefully a delegation, official delegation from the town could go in the spring, if you will, of 2015, so it's only a little over a year away, and I just mention that to the board because we'll certainly probably need somebody, or two, or three people, officials, to do it. They've been very good about coming to Situate in the United States, and it's going to be something we'll have to think about and possibly budget for, so I just raise that now, and I'll certainly share with everybody because I'm on the committee when we meet next week, and share more information with you, but I just want to at least give you a heads up, kind of come here sooner than later, so.
I'd like you to mention that.
And I mean, when they are here, and I think an example is, you know, we don't have certain, we don't have a French flag, we should probably have that, we're Sister City, we don't have signage, we really should have that, you know, we need to put a little effort into this, and I think, not that we haven't, but I think we need to go an extra step, so, people should, we should consider that going forward.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you very much for mentioning that. Okay. Tricia, the report on the town administrator for the week ahead.
Okay, I'm going to start with the last one first, and then I can work up, Kevin Kelly's here to do the usage policy for the Harbor Community Building that the board suggested. But before I do that, I want to have a public announcement. We had a lot of questions and calls today about the transfer station, and over the holidays, it's probably the number one question we get from folks, so we'll have this on the website tomorrow, but for Thanksgiving, the transfer station will be closed Thursday and Friday, and Wednesday, it's going to be closed tomorrow as well as it usually is, but it will reopen on Saturday. And Christmas Eve, it will close on noon, at noon, and Christmas Day, it will be closed, and we'll re, and Thursday, the day after, and then we'll reopen again the next day on Saturday, and the same for New Year's Day, Friday, so, we'll have that up, but for folks, the transfer station's open again on Saturday.
So for Christmas, it's going to be closed Tuesday afternoon, all day Wednesday, and all day Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
And reopen on Friday?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, is that what we typically do, I mean?
Well, Christmas shifts every day, but the normal, I mean, because the transfer station's open Saturday and Sunday, the normal days off are Wednesday and Thursday for the staff, and that changes. Today, that would normally be a day off for the staff, but we opened it anyway with other staff, so, but that, that's typically, folks are used to that, and we get the word out, and they're very accommodating, so I just want to, at the request of the DPW, get that out.
I think the only thing to discuss there is, Thursday, everybody has all the wrapping paper and all the stuff to throw away, so, you know, that's what people just have to be aware of, if it's going to be closed.
Do you have a question, Ann?
Well, wait, wait, one second, I've got, yeah, it's alright.
You know, you just have to store it, you know, for a day, and then come on Friday.
I express my concern, saying, it's a topic for another day, but the day after Thanksgiving to me is probably more important to be open, with all the leftovers and garbage and things, you know, Christmas, you'll have quite a bit, but you have more wrapping paper than anything, so I just think, topic for another day, a couple other towns are open Friday, there's one town that mirrors our hours exactly like Situate, and they're open on Friday. So I just, you know, not for this year, or maybe next, but for the future, I think it's important, day after Thanksgiving should be open. That's just my opinion.
Ian?
Just a form of clarification, you basically advanced a question that I had. I was under the impression that the transfer station, today's Tuesday, was open yesterday and today.
It was, yeah.
Yes, as it always is. And then it's closed tomorrow, Wednesday usually. And then Thursday for Thanksgiving. It just seems, I agree with you Sean, that it should be open on Friday, but is this what we've always done, is close it on Friday, the day after Christmas?
I can't remember.
Yes, it's a contractual obligation.
To be honest with you, I actually disagree, I'm like, you know, if it is a contractual, I don't want to have to be working the day after Thanksgiving, and I certainly don't like to work the day after Christmas, I realize the town employees may have to, but if they don't have to, if there's a contractual, good for them, it's just, the people need to understand that you have to wait until Friday, or Sat, or rather, until Saturday, and just, that's my feeling on it, I mean, if anybody wants a day after Christmas or Thanksgiving, good for them, because that's what I take, and I think it's, I enjoy it when it off, so I hope they get it.
I'm sorry, Tricia.
That's okay, no, that's what I brought it up.
So, just so we can understand and explain it again, that typically they would be closed on the day that's a holiday that they get off anyways?
Transfer stations, Wednesdays and Thursdays are closed.
So because Christmas falls on a Wednesday this day, they get the day off anyways, so it's being pushed to the, to the day after, the Thursday.
They get a comp day, where they get comped, because their holiday is a day off anyway, so, the comp day would be Friday, so now they have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday off, that's, that's really what it amounts to.
You're referring to Thanksgiving?
Christmas.
But so for Thanksgiving, they're gonna get Friday instead of Thursday?
That's another comp day, I'm assuming.
They're open Friday after Christmas.
Right.
It's one of those, you know, if you're an employee, you love it. If you wanna throw your turkey stuff away, you hate it.
They're gonna hate it.
I think so.
Yep.
I'm with you.
We're going to Kim's house.
Way to go.
I'm gonna give you carcasses.
Thank you for, but, but, thank you for, uh, you know, just bringing it up.
Next item, um, well, not on substance abuse coordinator, so, um, two weeks ago, um, as, well, just to give you, um, some history, as you know, the town received a six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar substance abuse grant from the federal government through, um, I can't, I only know the acronym SAMSHA. I can't begin to tell you, S-A-M-S-H-A, um, to, um, encourage and expand and, uh, support the work done by our FACS Coalition here in town, and as part of that, um, grant, um, a coordinator is, um, to be hired to do that work on behalf of the community, be responsible for the reporting, and also meet all the initiatives and goals and objectives that are outlined in the grant. Um, I participated as the appointing authority, um, on, uh, panel interviews. We had nineteen applications. We selected seven folks for interview. One withdrew, one was from out of state, who we were gonna interview if we did not find somebody of the, the five here. Um, Chief Stewart was on that Committee, as well as Greg Grineri, who's the Chairman of the Health and Wellness Department for the Situate Public Schools, and, um, pleased to inform the Board that Anne Marie Galvin has been appointed as the, um, FACS Substance Abuse Coordinator. She'll begin working December second or thereabout, um, to soon be followed by, um, going to Washington DC for three days to receive training in the grant and the program along with Greg Grineri. So Anne Marie will be working, um, thirty hours a week, and a lot of her work is involved in the evenings, working with parents and other groups, and then she'll have a little bit of a reduced schedule during the summer, so, um, we welcome, um, Anne Marie, and then also, while I'm just on the same subject, um, the new manager of Social Services for the Council on Aging starts on Monday. Her name's Laura Munier. She's a licensed, uh, social worker. That was a new position in the FY fifteen budget. There's a lot of change going on in the Council on Aging, and also an expansion of staff, so, um, I want the Board to be aware that Florence is retiring, and, um, the Chair and Vice Chair of, as well as Florence, of the Council on Aging Board and Directors interviewed finalists last week, and they also met with the staff. We have-
I'm sorry, say that again. They interviewed for the position?
No, they interviewed the finalists for the Council on Aging Director. Yeah, I'll use some nouns so you can follow. Um, so they, you know, I selected finalists, and, uh, Joan Powers and Audrey Reedy, along with Florence, interviewed them, and then they went down the staff, and I toured them down at the facility. Um, so there's that, the new manager of Social Services position, full-time position. Um, we have a new outreach coordinator. Jenny Gerbus was promoted to the vacancy there, and we're, um, advertising now for a new position under the Formula Grant, which was Florence's idea, and I think was very, um, innovative. That position will be a volunteer slash activities coordinator, and we're in the process of hiring that right now, so new staff, new changes, um, town support for that staff, so, um, we're very excited about that.
If I could just add two cents, you know, I think Anne Marie has put so much time and energy into this, and she's really been the, the driving force for that program for, um, you know, since its inception, so I think she's a great selection to, to start that whole program off and then expand it where it has to go.
She has enough energy for twenty people. Um, we did interview some other qualified people, but we want to maintain the momentum that we have with this program, and so she can hit the ground running, and I met with her again today, and I needed to take a nap after, so, um, she's just, I think she'll be terrific for the community, and her commitment to that, I think is really gonna help us move leaps and bounds in this program, so that's good.
Great.
I agree.
Um, the next item is the golf course benefit analysis. Um, you have the memorandum that I gave to the Board relative to that, per your request last year, when we exercised the fifth and final year of the golf maintenance contract. You want an analysis of what it would look like to bring in in-house. As you can see, the difference is pretty nominal, less than ten thousand dollars. There is a typo on the total salaries. It should be two salaries at forty-five and one at sixty. If you did the math, that the salaries don't total the column in the first page, so I just wanted to, I was trying to do a lot of memorandums last week, so I apologize for that error. Um, so to that end, we are out to bid. The bid process for something like that has a long lead time. It has to be advertised in the Central Register. That'll come out tomorrow, and then there's a mandatory pre-bid conference on December second, uh, where any potential vendors have to, um, meet and, you know, ask, have an opportunity to ask questions, and then the bid submission is, um, December thirteenth, um, and that will be an award that the Board hopefully makes December seventeenth, 'cause the contract kicks in in January. Um, so that-
So the bids are opened on the spot?
No, they are not opened on the spot. They're taken under advisement because it's not the lowest bidder. It is based on the quality of their proposal, so we go with the best company and not necessarily the low bid. Um, so all you do and is, um, open and log the bids that day.
And then we discuss on the seventeenth.
And then the price proposals are submitted completely separately, so what we'll do is I'll open them on Friday, look at them with Bob over the weekend and Monday, and have a recommendation to you that Tuesday night if they're all in order.
Do you know if IGM is interested again?
Um, I, I would assume so, but, um, we've had an inquiry today. The form submittal, it didn't wrap, the word wrap didn't wrap well on the, um, RFP online, so we have to check that, so I do know that there will be other vendors. It's a small universe, but it's a very competitive universe, and, um, it is extremely important that the bid be issued correctly, and it took quite a bit of time to get it out.
I'll look for it tomorrow.
And there's a copy of it in your office if you wanna see it.
Do we only have to post it in the Register? Do you have to put it in the paper as well, or?
Yep, it's in the ledger. Um, I don't know when it's in the ledger. Maybe yesterday, maybe tomorrow, but it has to be in a newspaper as well. Um, the third thing, per the Board's request at the last reading, Kevin, if you wanna come a little closer, hiding in the back, is, um, to try and get some usage policy and a mission statement and some stuff going on, um, around opening up the Situate Harbor Community Building. I did finish the draft of the RFP for, um, a function reservationist. As I say in my memo, we're tying that, and that was intentional, since the town is operating the Situate Maritime Center now. That, that, that short-term contract sunsets December thirty-first, so we're bidding this whole thing out together with the community building and also the Maritime Center, so, um, and Kevin, you got that email today, right?
Question, if I may, just, just make sure I know what we're talking about. Is it gonna have to be the same entity? What did you say? You're sending out?
Same receptionist to coordinate all the-
Right, we're sending out a bid for somebody to handle all the reservations.
For both structures?
For both structures.
Fine, okay.
Uh-huh, and work with the caterers.
Gotcha.
Do the scheduling, do all that stuff.
So they just really run the same way?
Yep, collect the money. There's quite a number of things involved, um, at our level, especially if it involves liquor or entertainment.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it's great.
Money, so that's, that's what we're, I did the draft bid. Kevin, you got that today, right?
Yes, I did.
I sent it out to Kevin and Mark. I've been writing a lot of bids lately. Um, so, so that's out there, but, um, as you can see from, um, my memo, um, I, I have a couple of concerns about how we do this, but would like the Board at least to get, give me some feedback on the mission statement, the usage policy. There's a lot of things that are, um, in, you know, your, your box now in terms of what we're gonna charge for rent and, um, other things, and as far as, um, fees and, and the like, so, um, one of the highlights I did recommend is there be a two-tiered fee, if the Board is amenable, for something that's a wedding or, uh, you know, true private, private function, as opposed to a town use that is not an official town or school use, but, um, is, makes it at least within the range of, of some of our other groups in town, so I'm happy to answer any questions, and, and Kevin's the detailed person as far as the facility.
I see Rick's hand up first.
Yeah, I don't agree.
What, I don't understand your two-tiered. The sec, I'm, in theory, I'm in favor of a two-tiered, so we can cut people a break where need be, but you just said town, town functions, but not official town functions? What, what did you mean?
Well, Tricia, can I jump in here? I think what she meant there is a nonprofit, a-
Yes.
A shore road race, reception after the road race, or some, all right?
Something like that?
Anything along those lines?
Of course, yep, those kinds of things, yep.
A couple of-
Isn't that already addressed in the, uh, in the end? Used by town of Situate nonprofit groups will be paid deposit and cleaning fee?
That's what she's recommended.
No, what I'm saying-
Yep.
That's the memorandum. This, underneath it's a policy.
Okay.
Yeah, so I have some questions about the draft policy, if I could. Um, under hours of use, it says the Situate Harbor Community Building may be served in minimum four-hour blocks. Then you say one hour setup, four hours of function.
Yep, I'm sorry.
Isn't that six?
No, it's a typo. It's not per hour. It's three hundred dollars for the per, for the four-hour block.
But what about this minimum thing? Is there a minimum?
Mean the town?
On the hours of use?
No, he's under the hours of use.
Hours of use on page one?
It's a different, that's a different.
Page one of what?
Of the, uh-
It says Situate Harbor Community Building, forty-four Jerrycro Road.
You wrote the usage policy?
Hours of use.
Yes, usage policy.
Yep.
Right.
Uses policy under hours of use. It says minimum four-hour blocks, and then the total of all those next ones is six hours. So I'm wondering what was the intent? Is the intent four or six?
You're right, it's six.
It's six.
Six, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
So that should be a six there?
For setup and a health and cleanup or-
Four hours of use.
Sorry.
Okay, so that should be six, no problem.
Typical function would be six hours.
Yep.
That's no problem.
And what you're recommending is three fifty for a wedding potty, for example.
Three hundred is what?
I had three hundred.
Sorry, three hundred. No, three fifty was the marine park.
Yes.
Okay, now then, at the top of the next page, and this might sound subtle, but I'm actually curious about it. It says, "If you plan to have your event catered, we ask that you use one of the approved vendors from our list." Is that a request or a requirement?
It's an ask. You can't require it, and this is gonna change in the Maritime Center because you need to bid. You can't have exclusive caterers.
Okay, thank you.
So that's changed in this document. It will be changed going forward in the Maritime-
Exactly why I was asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um-
But then, it, just to pipe in if I may, any caterer that does use the space needs to fill out the appropriate-
All the stuff.
Be all our requirements.
Yeah, they have to have all the forms and, I got you. They have to be, okay.
Whereas everybody that's already on the list has already done all that.
Correct. But if someone wants to go off the list, they still have to have, obviously, whoever they hire as a caterer has to-
Right, um, because what happens now is we have on file all their, uh, insurance liability, their liquor liability, all that, so if somebody wants to use another caterer, they can use it, except they need to provide all that additional information, so we have it on file prior to the event.
Should be here though, right? If, if they wanna go off the list.
It's in there, yeah. It's in there, yeah. It's towards the, it's in the usage policy toward the end.
All right, okay. Um, under the decorations and so on, I guess the implication is, is that if they haven't removed all the decorations, then that would be charged against their-
That's why there's the cleaning deposit.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the music may only be played inside the main function room? My only concern there is, you know, being suspicious, I could see someone might be setting up music that's right in front of windows that are open and so on, that it could essentially be external, and so we just need to be careful about that, and you might wanna consider putting wording in to make sure that the, although the music may only be played inside the main function room, but that there's not excessive, um, bleed out of the music into the outside.
Right, well, none of the windows open at the, um, Harbor Community Building.
It's not really an issue in that building.
But the other side it does.
There you go.
The other side?
Maritime Center.
This is only for the Harbor Community Building.
But weren't you trying to merge these together?
No, the bid for reservations is merged. This is the usage policy just for the Harbor Community Building, yeah.
I'm all set.
And Rick, the Maritime Center one clearly does address.
Yeah, that's right. That's why I was-
Yeah.
Okay, I was unclear as to what was, I was unclear as to what was being merged and what wasn't. All right, thanks, I'm all set.
You mentioned other towns that might have a piece of property like this and what they do, and I think that's important, you s, you know, talk to that person, and if need be, maybe hire a part-time person just to manage these two buildings for these reasons.
Well-
Let's, let's see what other towns have, maybe, you know?
Right, well, most of them have a full-time person. Um, I've worked in two communities that had buildings that were owned by the town that were rented for, um, private, you know, other functions. One was handled by the Recreation Department, the Parks and Recreation Superintendent, and the other one was managed by the Facilities Department. Um, so, um, I think that we'll be in a position to see if we need to hire somebody like that a year from now, depending on the usage of the building.
Good.
Um, but also, you know, if the building is very popular, we'll need to continue to invest more in it, as we should, um, and, um, we'll just have to see what the demand is, but I, I, I don't disagree with you. But part of bidding, the reservations and all that, and the cleaning should make it manageable, I hope, for us.
Right. Tony?
Yeah, just a, a couple of things that, that I picked up. I agree with, on everything that Rick said. Um, I guess my, one of my, um, concerns was the deposit and the cleaning fee. I think there were issues in the past where people would use it, they wouldn't clean it, the next group came in to a dirty facility, so I hope in this receptionist, uh, contract that some of it is that they have to go actually check the facility and make sure it's clean after the, the first people leave, and I think that the deposit should be as high as it would take to clean that place if it was a complete mess, so that if it's, if, if a company would come in and clean it for three hundred dollars, then the deposit should be three hundred dollars, so if it's a mess, we can get it cleaned immediately, and they lose their deposit, but if it's clean, then they just get the, the three hundred dollars back. So I think the cleaning, I think the deposit and the cleaning fee are synonymous in my vision of it.
I think it creates an incentive for the, anybody who's gonna do it to say, you know what? If I have a refundable deposit, providing I clean up after myself, I'll do that. Otherwise, if it's a lower one, they're gonna be more inclined to say-
Well, when we were, had the facility open before, the cleaning fee was two hundred dollars.
But is that what we can, I mean, we don't wanna clean it. We wanna hire-
No, no, we brought in, when it was open before, we brought in someone that was two hundred dollars.
So as long as we get whatever that quote is to clean it, if it's a mess, then that's what the deposit should be, in my opinion.
Everyone's agreeing with that.
The other, um, and then I talked about who checks to make sure it's clean. I assume that's the reception, uh, that's part of the duty.
Scheduling?
Yeah, Kevin, that's something we might wanna make sure is more clear in the RFP Yeah, Kevin, that's something we might wanna make sure is more clear in the RFP, as a duty that they have to do. I think it's in there, but I think we can, to Tony's point, we can call it out more.
Yeah, I mean, we don't wanna get called to say, you know, there's cake on the floor or whatever.
Well, Kevin doesn't want it.
Right, exactly. Um, and the only other, one other thing that jumped out at me was, um, the police detail. You know, we're saying you may need a police detail, I'm wondering if we wanna say, if your event has more than-
Certain amount of people, yeah.
A hundred and fifty, whatever the number is of people, whatever the police chief thinks, that they have to get a police detail.
So a number of patrons would be-
Probably seventy-five would be a good number, you know, that's pretty typical.
Not, not so much an event, a wedding.
Right.
Right.
You know, for funerals, but for weddings you do.
And that would probably have to coincide with real, we only have seventy parking spots, really, what the issue is. So could you have, you know, if you only have seventy spots, can you really even have three hundred and forty-five people in there? You know, somehow get an idea of what the capacity should be for that building with the fire and police, and what the safety levels would be mandating a, a police-
Well, the occupancy thing that's in there came from the fire chief, so, um-
And seventy spots can handle three hundred and forty-five people?
No, I, that I don't know the answer to, but I'm just saying in terms of the occupancy of the building.
And the other thing is if, Tony, where's the police detail mentioned in this policy?
It says, uh, police detail may be required. We reserve the right, depending on the event.
Memorandum, is it, or is it in the, um?
No, it's in the usage policies, um.
It's only two pages long, maybe it was-
Yeah, I didn't-
Let's see, on the user regulations, let's see.
That's the memo, on the memo?
No, I'm gonna wait, wait, the sec, um, the town reserves the right to require police detail to control vehicle traffic during usage function at its sole discretion. Vehicles ma- vehicles may be parked only in the parking area or be ticketed.
Oh, it's in the regs?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, that's buried, that might need to be up in the usage policy.
The only other thing that I, I was thinking we should discuss is, I don't know why this building would be less expensive than the Maritime Center, seeing as it holds three times as many people, and is more likely to be used for bigger functions. So it seems to me that that would be a higher expense, not for people that are using it, I mean, I like the fact that it's only fifty dollars if you wanna use it for a local nonprofit or a me- or that sort of stuff. But if someone wants to go have a wedding there, or something there, I think three hundred dollars is a steal. Um, so, um, we may wanna consider increasing that to four, five hundred dollars, I don't, you know, whatever you guys think.
Still, I'll get to you, it's, I think, that's fine with me, it's still very inexpensive, I think.
Does three hundred dollars car- cover the cost of insurance and the reservation and all this, I mean?
Um, if it's used multiple times, our cost should be covered, I mean, that's what we need to know, we need to, you know, we know what our electricity is, we know what our heating and air conditioning is. But, um, I, I guess it's not a beautiful facility yet. I mean, we've done, continued to do some, you know, the roof is a major repair, and the carpet is a major change in programming the second bathroom. But, you know, the Maritime Center is a, a unique location that I think is newer, and, and that's what I was, but, I mean, it's totally up to your board, the board, what you wanna decide, totally.
That's, yeah, I don't know what the number should be, but-
We have to decide tonight.
Could always see how it goes for a year, and then come back and revisit and say, you know what, it's getting overused, this is more popular, so maybe that's the thing to do.
Do we have the, the sole discretion whether to accept or deny somebody the use, just as long as that language is in there? We may say we don't want prom parties, or weddings, or, you know-
Sean's High School reunion.
Sean's High School reunion, or Harris Family Reunions, or something like that.
Yes, um, we can make that more clear.
I ju- I just had one other question, that's, I was looking at the, the three hundred dollar rental fee, must, it must be submitted thirty days prior to your event, is that necessary?
Yes, it is, because we are often in a position here where the event is two days away, and there's eighty people coming from out of town, and they still don't have their liquor license or their ins- additional insured. We, we insist on that for any, um, special event application, for the road races or stuff, 'cause we need to have their insurance, and we need to know if the check bounces.
Okay, the reason I asked the question is, so, if you're, if, if we're looking at doing something twenty days from now, we just say, forget this, we're not even gonna look at it, because we're already inside the thirty, thirty-day deadline, so forget it. Okay, well, I-
I think it can be less for the nonprofits, maybe, but if you're talking about a major event, then-
You know well enough in advance, you know, I don't think that's gonna-
If you looked at, for instance, something around a holiday or something, and you tried to find out if it was available, if you're in thirty, inside the thirty-day window, you're, you're, you're out, you're out of luck.
I guess you could come in, and if you had cash, and if you, if you, if it wasn't being used-
I'm just saying, I think we can doctor that up a little bit.
You came to my house?
Hey, give me some extra money, you know?
I get it, some extra cash.
Oh, this is Tammy Hall again, I like that, okay.
I just think thirty days is, I, most checks are gonna be cleared in fifteen days unless they're out of country, so, I mean, I don't, I think thirty days is a little bit, that's just me, I don't know.
I think it's probably good to have a policy and-
Yeah, I think, you have to have a policy, like Tricia said, two, three days before, if you don't have the money, the check bounces. I understand, but I just think that if, if we're, if it's booked all the time and we're inside of thirty days, it's a wonderful thing. But if we're, if we're not getting the usage, and, you know, that's our policy, and people aren't gonna look at it.
Okay, I, you get, you come with cash, so that's not an issue, but now you need a detail, 'cause, you know, we've decided if it's over, X amount. So, you know, the chief needs to make sure that position's filled, and I think there's a few other things that come into play, maybe somewhere in the middle, but, you know.
Yeah, well, I see how it goes, and if it's, if it ends up, if that's a hurdle that's, that's restricting and it's empty, then we'll address, that would be something to look at.
John?
Alright, so here are some of my comments, with the music, I guess, if somebody did wanna have outside music, they'd have to come before us to get it, correct? To get a license for outside, alright. Because I was gonna say, unless otherwise, my suggestion was, unless otherwise specifically authorized by the Board of Selectmen, that's music played inside. The reason is, who knows in the future, there could be potentially during the summer, outdoor concerts. Yes, I'm acutely aware that neighbors live there, but it would certainly be a great backdrop if somebody wanted to have some kind of like small little festival, outdoor music, as opposed to putting it inside. So that was one thing that I thought about, just to at least give us a little leeway, but if they wanted to do that, I guess they still could come through the board and ask that request.
We grant them in neighborhoods, to people's houses, so-
They'd come, I mean, I liked your language, though, I'll definitely include it, and they'd still have to come to you, though, because you grant the entertainment permit, yep.
Um, going back, the hours, that was, Rick, you hit that up. Um, I know the trash removal, I do not wanna be in the business of trash removal, especially who knows what they're gonna dump there. But if you do have a big event, do we increase the rate to say, okay, we're gonna take the trash out of there? I like the pack it in, pack it out, I just throw that out there, maybe something we revisit in a year or two or three and see what happens.
Wait a minute, I'm confused, what are you saying?
Under the trash removal and disposal, if you rent the place, you take care of the trash yourself, packing and packing out. Correct, I'm not saying that, I'm saying, is this a consideration that maybe we might need to afford, you know, increase the rate to take care of the trash? If you have an event with a number of people, you're gonna be black bags sticking there outside, it's just, it's just something to think about, that's what I was saying. Um, the only other thing was the music, maybe if we make money on it in the future, maybe we put in a sound system, potentially goes into the structure of whether or not the facility's operating. The only other thing I had was, I, do we have a stove, Kevin?
No.
Down there? Is there, is there something that maybe we think about, just for smaller events? And in particular, I was thinking more or less towards any type of town function the town has down there, potentially. We might think about having at least something there for warming up. I think we have it at the gar, although I realize that's run separately with the Historical Society, but just a thought. Not a warming oven, well, just something small, nothing commercial is what I was gonna suggest.
There's plenty of room for it, Kevin, isn't there?
There's plenty of room for it, one of, one of the obstacles, if we start to look at stoves, is it kicks off different levels that we need to meet for the Board of Health with grease traps, 'cause now you're able to prepare food, which means you can use the sink, and-
It's a much bigger liability, and some of that was proposed with the original plan Kevin brought to you last May, with the more investment in the building. We have a prep sink, we have refrigeration, um, but Kevin's right, we, the code kicks in, and the electrical, um, for that kind of stuff is-
So maybe I propose this, let's take a look at this microwave, just something, but think about this for the course of the year or two, see how it goes, because that might be something we might wanna expand to, given the regulations, but at least to see how the, how the programming and the reservations go.
And I can talk to Board of Health and find out what is, what would be acceptable, without kicking on to the next level.
That'd be good.
Grease trap is a big-
But I think John makes a good point, is if we just live with this for six months, and then, the, the problem with the building is it has, still has no budget. So, um, for those kinds of things and whatever, there's no line item right now to go out and put a stove in or upgrade anything. But if we contemplate that, then Kevin can put it in his budget for FY fifteen, and that way we'll have an opportunity to do that. Because the mitigation money only cau- pays for major improvements. But stuff like that, he can put in his FY fifteen budget request, and we can roll some of that stuff in.
But this budget, these dollar values that you have on an hourly basis, presumably will do more than just cover the basic costs, and help build up reserves to pay for such things, right?
That's hopeful, I mean, you're gonna create the revolving fund at the annual town meeting, so, I mean, I mean, we need to see how it's gonna go in terms of cash flow. We have a good handle, we know what the insurance is, we know what the utilities are, um, and, and then we'll see what, what's coming in. We'll know, um, before January first, what the, um, reservationist bid is gonna be, and then we just have to weave in the cleaning charges after an event.
Kevin, does the building have a generator?
No.
Ann?
Is any thought given to, um, having a two-tiered fee system for out-of-town? I know that the, um, lightkeepers in Cohasset has a two-tiered, if you are a resident, you pay X. If you are a non-resident, you pay almost more, oh, I think it's more than double, if you're from out-of-town.
If I had to answer that myself, I bet you we couldn't do that, based on the way the money was given to us, that's just my opinion.
Because it's from the state?
Right.
Yeah, it's kinda like Jericho ramp, you can't charge because it's a state-
I mean, that, that could be a question, you know, Tricia could get answered from Jim Cantwell, and we can do the stuff prior to finding, getting that decision from the legislatures, correct? Tricia?
What, this stuff, yes, because it's a secondary-
Primary.
It's a primary use, it's still for town boards and committees, school, right? So this is always a secondary use.
She raises a good point, maybe we can put in here a preference to town, as a priority, a preference to town, somebody from the town of Cituit, as opposed to, um, surrounding towns or out-of-town groups seeking it, just a preference if they're-
I don't see, um, why you couldn't.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Because of the way it's not the primary use.
Yeah, preference is different from dollars, I think preference, I think would be great. In addition to that, why can't we charge them more?
You can't manage preference.
Now, how do you handle it?
You can't manage preference, I mean, what I've worked really hard to do in this is eliminate discretion. I mean, it has to be clear, and it has to be black and white, that's the only way it can be managed.
So what happens when somebody says, from out-of-town and in-town, they want the same date, and they submit it the same day? Do you know what I'm saying, in other words, do we get to the very first one to get stamped, or, that's what I'm saying about preference.
That's what we would do, we'd say, I'm sorry, that date is booked. That's what we, that happens all the time now, John, with special events, we do over thirty special events in the summer here, and we do every individual application, and what's that's leading to, is people are trying to book now for something that's next October.
Right.
But Ann brings up a good point, because there are very few places in the South Shore where you can put three hundred people in a facility, so-
Overlooking the water.
Yeah, on the water, so, you know, it'll be a-
Nobody's gonna wanna go to the, uh, lightkeeper's house, because that's gonna be a-
But it will be a destination place for big events, so, because-
But again, the building is not a castle, I just wanna reiterate that, and the, you know, the kitchen facility, I mean, we really have to underscore that, it is, as is. No, I couldn't, I learned that, Marty, I learned that when we opened it up before, so, yeah.
But there, I mean, I don't wanna say this, so I'm not gonna say that, but they're gonna know what they're renting.
Yes.
So that's their decision. I mean, I agree with you, right, but that's their decision, let's not make their decision for them.
And that kinda gets to my point, that it should be more-
Yeah, right.
Money for-
And if we can legally charge out-of-towners more, as long as it doesn't go over the sweet spot of, of, of being a disincentive, why not?
And only because when you put three hundred people in that facility, the wear and tear on it is so much more.
Well, your utilities are going up anyway, I mean, everything there, I mean-
Just the, just the number of things that get dropped on the rugs, and, you know, you get a, you probably have to, you know, steam the rugs every other event, so.
Were you the one who mentioned the numbers, like, having some kind of like fee structure, a graduated fee structure? Was that you, who said that, you did? That's a good, that's a good point. No, it's, if you're gonna have so many people, X, if you're gonna have X plus, it's gonna be another noume out. I think that, that might be, it makes sense, potentially, again, maybe, maybe the approach to this is to say, let's see how the first six to eight months or first year goes, but I'd be willing to bet you're right, well, as soon as the word's out, people are gonna wanna book a reservation.
A wedding or two.
From Memorial Day to Labor Day, for sure.
Yeah, a wedding or two.
September will be golden.
But keep in mind, it's very limited what you can do for food, and then-
Good point.
What, caterers?
Bring a caterer and put a truck there, boom, they'll take it right through the-
Is the refrigerator there yet?
No, it's not there yet.
Yeah, and the rug is being done when?
Uh, two weeks.
I think overall, I also just wanna say, I really appreciate, I mean, we're kinda like picking at something, I just wanna make sure you appreciate that we're picking at things that are good, because we've never had an opportunity, this is good, this is all good.
It was a quick turnaround, so-
We're trying to get this going, this is all good.
Yeah, no, and I totally agree, let's get it right the first time, without trying to open it up and then create messes, let's get it right on paper.
And I like the no discretion, so we just, it's no fuss, no muss, it's just a dumb thing.
Okay, so this is in Tricia's report, just see if I can wrap this up. So at a future meeting, we put on an agenda item, it would be listed, the, he's, these are the-
Well, I would, if you've, I think you can vote a contingent on all the changes that you made, if you're comfortable with it, are you comfortable with the mission statement? And I think the only other thing, to Tony's point, is what you're gonna charge, and whether you wanna do a resident and non-resident fee.
Are we allowed to legally, you think?
I think so, I think so.
I think yes.
Uh, Jim's in my office tomorrow at eight-thirty, I can run it by him, but I've seen that often in these types of things, where there's a resident and a non-resident fee.
Yeah, I, well, I think that's one way of giving the priority of, you know, at least, I'll vote it.
Alright, that's fine, okay.
I said the voting, that, you know, the slips, there's slips for different-
Well, that, yeah, but some of that, yeah, that's very subtle, but-
So we probably said about a dozen little changes that we're gonna look into, so we'll look into that, and then-
No, he's talking about, uh, local versus non-local fees, it's different. Yeah, so why don't I move to accept the, what are we calling this? The policy, the use policy?
Yep.
Move to accept the Cituit Harbor Community Building use policy as written and as modified by the discussions tonight. Here, now.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Very well put. If someone else likes that-
Second, I'll second that.
I don't mind, I mean, we're, we're gonna have to talk about, as soon as we figure out what fee, you gotta put fees in this. You gotta get the police and the fire stuff for the size.
So they're gonna put it in?
What?
They'll do that, that's what we just said, that's what the motion says.
Yeah.
Alright, a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
And we'll just talk about it again.
Alright. Does that cover everything, Tricia?
Yes, it does, Mr. Chair.
Um, before, Kevin, before you leave, um, I gotta embarrass you, you knew that. If you guys have a chance to go down First Parish Road, go by the fire station and see the concrete that Kevin had poured today, he should've put his initials on it, that's how long, Tony, has that been on the capital plan? Awesome, awesome, I saw them doing it, with all the wire mesh and all, and Kevin was right on site, we couldn't have picked a better day. If we'd tried to do it yesterday, it would've been that much more difficult, but that's great. So asphalt to follow, right out to First Parish Road.
Original plan was to do the asphalt the end of this week, but weather-wise, we'll probably push it off till Monday.
Great.
For the asphalt.
Great.
And they're, they're working fine with using the back of it.
All the equipment goes out in the back, right? Right, that's, that has been a long time, so.
No, I didn't.
Yep, great, thanks, Kevin.
Just, Kevin, also, you mentioned the rugs are two weeks away now, so, but that's not gonna hold up any events that are going on there.
No.
Yeah, so-
It should be, we're working around for the Santa Stroll.
Oh, good, great. Alright, thank you. Uh, moving, moving on to number ten is, um, other business, correspondence. Maybe we'll start with the correspondence, if that's alright, I think there's a, just a couple of things there, Marty, is there?
Yep.
Should be read.
This is addressed to Cituit Town Hall, attention Chairman, Board of Selectmen. Dear Mr. Harris, I am writing to acknowledge the outstanding work and dedication shown by the Department of Public Works. They have done and continue to superbly maintain the veterans' town cemeteries and memorials throughout the town. Mr. Fran Lyden has been the go-to person for every veterans' event that the town has been involved in. His everyday positive attitude comes through every time you meet or talk with him. Mr. Lyden and his crew have kept the veterans' cemeteries in an immaculate condition. The town of Cituit and the Veterans Services Department are very fortunate that Mr. Lyden, his crew of employ- his crew and, are employees of the town. The pride he takes in his work is on display every time visitors or family members enter the cemeteries or other memorial sites in town, and we are grateful. Respectfully submitted, Donald L. Snapp, Town of Cituit, Cituit Veterans Services Officer. And then- Alright, is this, do we wanna, is this, that might be it, right?
There's a FEMA one.
I, I, I lost both of mine, I don't know what they have, so.
Yeah, there's a FEMA one.
Uh, wait, okay, this is, um-
Starts off funny, but-
Yeah.
Go to the second paragraph.
Okay. Uh, like, dear Ms. Vinkese, like so many other residents, I have, I am having issues with FEMA in my flood insurance policy. I recently went to the building commissioner's office for some help, and was given more help than I had a right to expect from Maureen Galvin. She was extremely helpful and deserving of this brief thank you. Very truly yours, Charles L. Gaffney.
That's great.
And that's it.
Glad you did read that, thank you, Marty. That's it for correspondence, I don't wanna, you had it earlier, but anyway, um, I'll give you a break. Alright, you wanna go to the minutes, or other business, alright, minutes, I guess, you got it right there, Tony?
Sure. Uh, move of the Board of Selectmen, vote to accept the regular session minutes for November twelfth, two thousand and thirteen.
Second motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, that's it for minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, other business, I'll jump over to Rick, Mr. Murray.
Um, one, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I have a lot to be thankful for living in this town of ours. Number two, the website, a lot of committees are chiming in about the website, and I think Bill's doing a great job on it, and I've been getting a lot of positive feedback. One thing I brought up in the past was about the schools.
The link, yeah.
The link up there, right on the homepage, it's our largest department, and if we could have it so people just can jump right to the school through the Cituit. But have a good Thanksgiving, it's a good, good time of year to kick off the holiday season. I extend that to all you guys as well.
Well, I have actually two things, or maybe three. Cole Parkway, I have to tell ya, I was down there Friday, and, Friday evening, and I went down to the end, and I couldn't get there, I had to go all the way around the docks, or go through the gazebo. I'm telling you, we've gotta do something about the docks down on Cole Parkway. I keep calling it the Wall of China, it really is. I mean, we've got a view there for the public, and we're basically precluding them to go down or have to go around. We really need to find another location for it, if it means, and I think, Sean, you offered at one point even using trucks just to move them down, whether it was a transfer station, put it to the parking lot at the golf, I don't care, but I think we, it's, it's time that we do something, to move it somewhere else.
Can I just jump in there, before you move on? And I'll defer to Rick. You know, you'd have, so you'd have, you know, the same crane could, instead of setting them on the parking lot, set them on a flatbed, fill the trailer and go. Then you need another crane to lift them off, put them in another, you know, good spot. Would it shorten the life of the docks, Rick? You're lifting it up twice as much?
I don't think it would shorten the life of the docks, but it would cost money.
Yeah, right, but I, you know, not a whole lot of money if it was set up, you know, let's, let's say, for example, a transfer station, if there was an area big enough, you'd have that crane already set up there.
That's correct.
I think the golf course parking lot would be...
Yeah, for the summer, or for the winter, just put it off and that's it.
Yeah, and the, um, I don't think it would have any significant impact on the life of the floats.
That's all, I'm sorry, John, but...
But I would defer to the harbor master on that technical issue, but my sense is that it would not affect the life of the floats.
I think we just need to know what would the cost be, and then try to figure out, I realize economic hard time, I understand that, but we've been, I've been talking about this for six years, and I'm like, you know what? It would be nice to think in the future, next year, year after, at some point, we'd get them off that location, move them somewhere else. I think at least we owe it to the town to find out what the cost is, and then determine whether or not it's worth spending that amount.
My daughter, my daughter said it the other night.
Really?
She's like, what are those things there?
So here's my second component. One way of maybe offsetting or paying for it happens to be the vehicles and cars and trucks that seem to be parking at Cole Parkway overnight, using it on a regular basis. So maybe we think about permitting it and saying, if you wanna park overnight, you gotta pay for it, uh, because it's a public lot and people are using it, and I just think that's another element that we need to investigate, take a look at. So I, I propose we do that, and I'm not trying to like start up another committee to go spend time to come up with a report, but I think we really should figure that out. Maybe Ann, you'll do that, you know?
It's been discussed with the chief.
Good, 'cause I have to say, that's one...
Actually, it's been out there for a while, and I've had individual conversations with you, and it's...
I, I think it's also part, excuse me, John, part of the economic development in terms of parking, and you're absolutely correct, John, it has been an issue in Cole Parkway in terms of overnight parking for as long as I've been sitting here, and it's been a while.
Now, we're gonna address that now, 'cause I'm like, let's get it fixed.
I just have a question, I, I think it's a great idea.
Tie it in.
Instead of just permitting the vehicles, maybe we should have set spots where they actually assign numbers, like they do at an HOA. That way they have to park there, they can't be parked up in these key locations by some of these merchants, you know?
And Marty, you were talking earlier about the pier.
Yeah, oh, the piers are another problem.
I think we should, Cole Parkway obviously is the largest real estate involved in this, that's the focus, but the enforcement and other issues down at the pier, people are parking at the pier, some of the employees of the businesses are parking in Cole Parkway at the pier and elsewhere for their shifts, and therefore customers can't get in there, and it's taken, essentially taken business away from the businesses.
Yeah, and it's gonna really have an impact when Oro moves over, when, when that is...
I think we should just look at, look at the whole thing.
Over there.
And it's not...
Say we're at the end, there's no place to park.
I think Mr. Denny's right, and it's not rocket science here.
Yeah, park in the parking lot.
I mean, really, it's not rocket science.
Well, the town pier had permits issued to those commercial fishermen, and...
Those parts are fine, but it's the other spots.
There's other spots that are just being used by...
But go there at night, and they're running, there's not a lot of fish going on at the middle of the night.
Right, right, you're, you're right, they even take the permit.
I wanna protect the fishermen's rights and also protect the rights of the, of other people to want to frequent our business.
But in the middle of the night, that's great, you know, if the fishermen aren't there, you know? That's great.
I mean, the problem is, there's not enough parking, I mean, we've all gone down there and wanted to go to the dog watch and can't find a place to park, and you want, you don't wanna deter people from using the, the businesses, it's how do you...
Right, it's a fine line there.
How do you...
And that's one of the businesses.
How do you get it so they...
But if you do the two-hour parking restriction or something for a lot of those spots, it would work for most people having dinner or a drink or whatever, but for somebody to do a six or an eight-hour shift at one of these establishments and they're taking the spots, it's hurting, it's hurting the bus, their own business.
Well, I mean, there's an answer to that, it's meters.
We also have the same issue up in North Situate with people parking.
Yeah, I like it.
Um, and it, it boils down to enforcement, it's really all about enforcement.
Yep.
When people, whether it's businesses or whatever, people taking the train, park in Situate Public Parking.
Yeah.
And they park there all day, and it's supposed to be a two-hour limit, I had somebody park in front of my shop for three days, and this right underneath the two-hour limit sign, so it, it's, you know, again, it's enforcement, and I could not agree more with John.
Whoa.
It's an issue.
Wow, my twice... Great minds, thank alike.
Boy, it's a Thanksgiving, it's a Thanksgiving attitude here tonight, boys and girls.
My final, my final one happens to be, and I know that we've talked about it, but that's all right, I'm sparking debate here, that's good. You know, whatever happens with our strategic plan that's coming out with the proposed senior center and the gates, I think one thing that we need to think about, 'cause I, I know we haven't really talked about it, but in conjunction with Ms. Galvin's appointment, you know, we should think about if the senior center gets relocated at another site, albeit I'm not sure where, but another site, you know, we, we have to think about what's Brook Street, and I have to say, a teen center might be the, the best location or, uh, best use of that property, it's something we might think about going forward. I, I don't think it's prudent to spend an awful lot of time on that, but, you know, I've been looking at it and, and thinking, you know, what a great location in the wake of her position. We, we should consider that as another, something down the road. And that's it.
All right. Tony?
Um, sure, I, I was just gonna mention a few of the activities that are coming up. Actually, you know what I wanna start with first, and Marty was there as well, that they had, they had a couple of very nice parties for Al Banger, his, his, what's his last day, this Friday?
Monday or Tuesday.
Monday, or the first, or something?
He'll be at your December third meeting, and that will be his last, because he's supposed to be here tonight.
Next week, and it was just very heartfelt, and a lot of town employees went to it, and I know you had a potluck dinner too that was very well-attended, and, you know, there's just so many people said so many nice things about him, and really respected him, and thought he did a great job, and I just thought it was really nice what they, what they did for him, and sad to see him go, but as he mentioned there, he's still part of the community and is still be involved in some level, but I thought both of those things were very poignant in terms of what he meant to the community.
Before you go on to your next one? I just, you know, and, and that happened at the GAA hall, but I don't wanna forget Florence as well.
Oh, right, right, all right.
You know, there was a, a, a nice number of people from Town Hall that attended that as well, it was, it was, it was neat, nice, very nice to see. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Great. And then the other things that are just, just some things that are going on over the next couple of days, um, what's that, Tuesday, so Thursday morning at ten o'clock at the high school behind us is the Thanksgiving Day football game, where we play Hingham at home.
Is this the final one?
This is their final game.
No, what I'm saying, it's the final time Situate plays Hingham, and it's Thanksgiving, because I think going forward, we play Cohasset.
Oh, really?
I think that's it, yeah.
Well, I didn't realize that.
Cohasset, who's in the Super Bowl in Division Six, I don't know, but, that'd be great, so it's five, I think it's free for Situate people and thirty dollars for Hingham people at the gate, um, just, only thirty? Just joking. Other things coming up over the, uh, over the next weekend, so Friday is, first Friday is December sixth, so all the, the big event for shopping and locally down in, in the merchants, uh, thing at December sixth, December seventh is the Santa stroll, and that's where, uh, Santa comes in via, via boat and meets all the people, and then it goes down towards Pier Forty-four where this, where the whole event is for, um, all the kids and the activities down there, which is great that we're gonna have that open. And then that evening is the Polar Express, which is sponsored for Shore and for the Course Foundation, and Situate Community Christmas is the ones that put on the other functionality of sounds, Santa stroll and the Pier Forty-four stuff.
Tony, can I interrupt you one more time?
Sure.
Are they still looking for, you know, students to, you know, to help with the Polar Express? 'Cause I know my daughter had done that years ago, and that's a way, you know, kids can be community service.
For both.
All right.
Community Christmas is looking for helpers as well as donations, and like you said, Polar Express is looking for people to read and, and help, uh, you know, guide the people through the tour there, so...
Do you know the schedule of that, Tony? For the Polar Express?
They're in the afternoon.
There's a few of them, right? Three, three different runs or something?
I think there's three different trains.
Okay.
And they get the track to themselves.
Yep, and then on, on the next day...
And PTA doesn't run.
On the eighth is the house tour, and that is, um, that sponsors the four PTOs of the four elementary schools, the funds to that, so, um, there's a lot of great Christmas spirit coming on down the road, and it starts next weekend, um, so, there's your stuff.
Great. Marty?
I just wanna touch again on the, um, the two gentlemen that were in earlier, Dave Ball and Ted Good, uh, as far as the Situate food pantry. It's, it's, the need is there, and hopefully we will, we'll get, get some response, but I wanna do a special thank you to the Boston Globe, the Patriot Ledger, and especially Ruth Thompson and the Situate Mariner, they've done a, a really good job of covering this thing, um, from the beginning, um, as well as everything else that the Mariner covers from, you know, Fall for Situate, and then obviously the, uh, the fifth anniversary that we had down on the harbor, I think they did an excellent job. And it keeps people sort of in the loop, and that's why we get such good crowds everywhere. So, um, but that's, that's about all I have, really.
The only thing I want to mention, about a month ago, Board of Health had a representative from the MMA, DJ, I believe his name was, all right, and somebody else from, let me get my notes here, I had them earlier, from Bay State Community Services, and what they gave a demonstration of the Board of Health of all this electronic cigarettes and blunts and you name it, I mean, it all went over my head, I had no idea what they were talking about, but Board of Health is in the process of updating their regulations, they haven't done it in a while. So, they're gonna, the Board of Health is gonna pick regulations, I have like a boilerplate